Yeah.
Okay, we're good to go. Okay, so I guess we'll call it an order. We're gonna start our meeting for November 20th, 2025, starting at 6:30 PM. Present will be, we'll roll around the corner like we usually do.
Michaela Pearson.
Of course. Excuse me. Nicholas Golden.
Kathleen Tracy, alternate.
Stephanie Meckel.
Amy Hewitt, clerk.
Kip Kotzen, acting chair.
Russell Fogg.
Richard Corysmire, alternate.
Sylvia Rukaska, council.
Eric Knapp, zoning enforcement officer.
Okay. I am requested to ask the newly seated elected members if they have been sworn in by the town clerk.
Yes.
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 Okay. Great. Okay. And we're all set on who's being seated for this case, or do we need to make that clear?
Well, you have at this point four regular members here. So for the first one, you can seat whoever you want. For the second one, since Russ was here last meeting, and you have listened to the tape?
I listened to the tape, yes.
Okay, then you're gonna say that on the record when we get there. So you can seat Russ for both, or you can seat someone else for the first one.
No? Russ, you happy to take the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so Russ is seated for.
Seated, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so facilitate efficient review. Please present, this is me, the evidence that an unusual and unnecessary hardship exists based on strict application of zoning regulations due to some peculiar condition of the property itself, and that the condition does not generally affect other properties in the district. The evidence that the variants requested are the minimum necessary to alleviate the unusual hardship and allow reasonable use of the property. Note whether there are any reduction of legal pre-existing nonconformities proposed. Note that the evidence that the variances requested are in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning regulations and comprehensive plan of zoning. And for coastal site plan review applications, we'll have to read the DEEP comments. And if applications have been reviewed by a town engineer, we'll read those comments in the engineer's report. So first case of the evening will be 2512 C-70 C-Spray Road.
That's not.
No. Okay, I'm reading it right there. Oops. Okay, so, yeah, my bad.
But she's.
Okay, now it's gotta be 1214. Sorry, it is backwards.
Yeah, she's got it reversed, sorry.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
I didn't have to do that.
Sorry to have gotten your hopes up on that one. Okay. So the first case that we'll hear this evening is 25-1441 Hartford Avenue in kind reconstruction on a concrete foundation of one of two existing non-conforming dwellings located on a non-conforming lot in the Soundview Village District. Daniel and Lori Tricarico applicants, if we could have representation, step forward. I'll read the variances that are requested, and then you come up and make your case. Variants requested are 513-7.7.8 rear yard setback 10 feet required, 513-7.9 side yard setback 6 feet required, 9.0.7 voluntary demolition of a non-conforming building. However, as section 9.07 has been deleted from all line zoning regulations, the applicant has agreed to remove their request for this variance. And secretary will read correspondence into.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Do we, do we have any new correspondence?
I think that's.
We have no new correspondence, of course.
Okay. And then open to public comment, I think. Okay. So we're in the part of the evening where you guys are gonna present to us the case for granting variances.
Okay, good evening, and welcome for those of you who are new. My name is Brendan Sharkey. I'm the attorney for, excuse me, Dan and Lori Tricarico, who are the owners of the property at 41 Hartford Avenue. With me is Dave Noe, who, from 360 Design Plus, who is the architect on the project. As indicated from the introduction, this is a request to rebuild one of the two structures on the property at 41 Hartford Avenue. If you've seen the property, it's somewhat unusual because it's a relatively narrow lot, not inconsistent with others in the neighborhood, but there are actually two structures on the house, on the property. And the one on the left is the one that we are seeking to rebuild. The existing structure has, rests on the foundations, or pure foundations, which are crumbling. We have some pictures that Dave will go over with you in a moment. So we're going to replace those pure foundations with a poured concrete foundation to make it safer. But then otherwise, and we'll have to obviously be demolishing the house as it is there now, but we, on the new foundation, will replace that building like-for-like, essentially. Same exact footprint, same height, and same dimensions as what is currently there. I wanted, just for the record, I do have, I know that you already have in your file a, the correspondence. I have another, another letter that we just received this week, but I thought I would add to the record, and I'm not seeing it now, so I guess I'll. No, I do have it. I just stapled it to the wrong thing.
This you don't think we have in our folder?
I know you don't, because I submitted the other letters that we've received.
Do we have a copy that you could give us, so we enter it as evidence?
Indeed, I do. And I've got.
And make this exhibit number one. Sounds right?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if you needed multiple.
Keep me on track, everybody's helping me.
Did you need multiple copies?
Yeah, you could ask members if they want it. Or you wanna read that in?
Yeah, what does it say?
What does it say?
I want.
Okay.
I'm happy to read it. I know later on you'll usually view other comments, so.
Yep.
But in this case, this is from Maria.
Yeah, we could delay this till later.
Okay.
This is one of the supporting letters.
Yes, it's the letter of support.
We'll make sure, remind us to read that.
Sure. So the variances that we're requesting, as you're mentioning, I'm withdrawing the request for a variance from the non-existing regulation, which is 9.07. Thanks to Eric Knapp for pointing that out to me. But the other two are just simply for the side yard and the rear yard behind the, adjacent to the left side building, if you will. As part of, we, well, first off, to rebuild in its current place, we would be rebuilding the foundation and the structure within the setback. And so while what's there is a legal nonconformity, because it was grandfathered, I felt that we needed variances if we were going to put a new foundation in and a new structure, even if it's in the exact same location. So that way would be, by way of a variance, it would be a legal nonconformity. So it's a little bit of a legal distinction, but I think it, I felt it was important to request that, so there's no doubt about it going.
Okay, so if I heard you clearly, not to be too interrupting, but.
Sure.
You're just putting a new improved version of what already exists there in the same location, just 'cause the other one's falling apart?
Indeed.
If you read by memo, they're basically because they're now going essentially down, because it's what appears to a foundation, they're increasing the amount of volume in the setback, except usually it's higher, this case it's lower.
Okay.
But three dimensionally, there's now more.
How deep is the slab, then?
The building's raised up approximately three feet, and we'll go down the minimum 42 inches to grade. So, you know, the basement will be six or seven feet, from the bottom of the joists to the slab.
So you will have at least a crawl space?
Yeah, yeah.
At six feet, under six feet, are you saying?
It would probably be a hair over, but below grade. Yeah.
So, as I've said in the application, the hardship that we're facing here is the fact that the house is on a, literally on shaky foundation. And replacing it is obviously gonna be necessary. There are a number of code violations already existing. So those are somewhat self-evident. The, what we are also proposing to do is remove a rear deck that is at the back of the property, that is literally right on the property line. So by eliminating that, we'll add at least three feet to the rear yard setback. And the only other thing I just wanted to add was that we do have RB 100A approval from Ledge Light Health District. But in reviewing this with Ledge Light, the replaced foundation and structure would have been viewed by Ledge Light as requiring a new separate septic system from what is there, so that each of the buildings would each have to have their own septic. And currently, they share, the two buildings share the same septic. But in working with Ledge Light on this, they agreed that if we were to, as part of this plan, design a connection between the two buildings, such as a small breezeway and covered breezeway, that the Health District would consider it one structure, and therefore we would be able to continue to use the single septic rather than having to be, having to.
How long have the homeowners owned this property?
They have owned it since, I'll tell you.
May 2020, right?
No, actually, they, well, that was actually from the, from the accessory trustee, yeah. They have owned it since, in one form or another, since 2004.
Yeah, that's more than 20 years.
Yeah.
So these houses were supposed to be connected in 2005? What's?
No, the houses were originally built in 1940.
Well, the, the plans by 360 whatever, they said you have to connect them as shown in the 2005 plans.
They asked us to connect them per our new plans. So I can show you. This is the new house they're looking to rebuild, and then this is the existing structure. And then as part of, as part of building this new house, a requirement would have been to put in a whole new septic system, which would not fit on the site. So we connected it here in the buildable area via breezeway, and that was a recommendation from Ledge Light.
A demand.
A demand.
A condition.
Yes.
Yeah, an offer. Yeah, should I use that question for you? I'm sorry.
Now, when you say breezeway, when you say breezeway, that's not, it doesn't have walls, right? It's just like a.
It's an open area, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and our FAR, so allowable here is 40%, and we're, with the breezeway, we're at 20.09, so we're well below FAR. And then, as Brendan was saying, this small area in the back where the staircase is now, that's gonna be removed, making that from a zero setback to, I think it's 3.9?
3.8.
3.8. So that's one movement in the right direction.
And why put it in the exact same place instead of moving it up?
Moving it more forward this way?
Yeah.
Mostly because of the septic system. So you can see our tanks are here, we're very close, and then also to not, really to not shadow this other little, little house here.
Isn't the driveway also very slanted?
Yeah, it is slightly slanted towards the front, towards the road.
The other thing that I pointed out in the application, too, is that the, the Soundview District also has had a preference for maintaining what's there. That's been a priority for, for the community. So to be, yeah, offsetting the houses and placing them in slightly different locations was, I think it was also going to create a visual discrepancy with what, what is currently there and what is existing, in addition to the fact that it would be interfering with the septic.
Is the other house also like 1933? Is that a newer?
Yeah, it's, it's also in pretty.
It's gonna be there forever?
What's that? Will be there forever.
Yeah, but 1933.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, this house is built on brick piers now, which are beginning of the mortar building period, and that. The floor joists are two-by-six floor joists, the rafters are two-by-sixes as well.
I saw the canopy, or whatever you call that, on the plans, and then there was also the arrow saying that the two homes would be connected in the future. Is that a plan, to make one home?
Oh, that's gotta be now.
In the future?
That's a breach.
That's the, that's the breezeway.
Well, you have both, the breezeway and then connected in the future on the plans that I have, and we have.
It should just be one breezeway that's connected now, would be connected as part of this approval.
Yeah, final approval.
Yeah. No, there's no intention, other than that breezeway, to connect anything other than, other than that. And it's the existing, no, that's a proposed, I'm sorry. Yeah, so you can see here, that's the connection. And that should kinda create some nice sort of open space between the two houses, and then there's these existing, you know, portions of the building that come off for storage. So, yeah, I mean, the goal of the homeowner really is, is just to really rebuild what's there, make it modern in the, in the sense of how it's structured, bring it up to today's standards, really is the goal.
Safer, actually, based on what you said about the foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, so I have a picture here, if you want this for an exhibit. This is really what it's on now, just those brick, those very small brick piers.
Oh, okay. Quick look and shit.
We'll just pull out the two.
Yep. And those are it, just the corners and a few street, no, it's a whole wall, or is it just?
No, it's just individual.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Two.
So, of course, now there's no crawl space or anything?
Yeah, it's just a dirt, dirt under it.
Dirt floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are the two tiny houses.
Right.
Whatever happens with the adjustments relative to grade, it's not gonna have impact. There's, we don't have any issues with the height of it.
No. Allowable, height allowable is 27, maximum height 27 or 20 feet.
Okay.
And the intention is to keep the same ridge height.
Okay.
So we're happy, we, as I, we mentioned at the opening of the hearing, we did receive a lot of positive responses from the neighbors who felt that this was, in fact, consistent with what either they're already trying to do with their properties and also wanna see happen elsewhere in the neighborhood. And as I mentioned, exhibit one is another letter of support that we received just today. So, so if, I don't know if there are any other questions?
Do you wanna read that letter?
Yeah, I'll read the, read that in if you think that's, if you think that's right.
I like your, my way, mother.
Yeah, yes. So responding from neighbors, I have Maria Greenslade, Maria Greenslade, about 41 Hartford Avenue. I don't see her address on this, but she's co-executor of the state, Mario Marina. I am writing as co-executor of the state of Mario Marina, who owns property on Hartford Avenue. We are in.
44 Hartford Avenue.
It's a what?
44.
44, okay, so near neighbor. We are receipt of a letter explaining the comprehensive renovations proposed for 41 Hartford Avenue. We have no objection to the proposed renovations. We ourselves completed renovations to improve the property and make the structure safe. Such projects continue to enhance the beauty of the shoreline and Hartford Avenue. So that's Maria Greenslade. So do we want to flash the elevations in front of us?
Yeah.
Take a peek? Yep.
So the existing house is here. We actually eliminated one bedroom, so went from a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom home. Just from a functionality standpoint for the owner. So you come in, so you come in, you have a living room here, the kitchen, and then, you know, functional bedroom and bathroom. So the, the footprint's approximately 600 square feet, so it's, it's, you know, very minimal home. And these are elevations. Again, you know, it's literally the same house with some new siding on it, new windows, everything just kind of freshened up.
Up, but with a basement?
With the basement and the canopy, yeah.
And that canopy.
But it's a single, it's a single floor, so they're putting in this, you said six-foot basement?
Yeah, I mean, we have to see, 'cause, you know, the water table over here is questionable.
That's what I wanted to work out, yeah.
And this existing, this existing floor is approximately three feet above grade, so if we go down our, our 42 inches, you know, maybe six foot six, just enough for storage and mechanicals.
So you think you can get a six-foot six basement in there with a water table?
I, I think we can because of the, that floor being as high as it is from grade.
And they are up, you know, that, that.
That's, that's true, that's true. You know, right at the edge of the floodplain, right there, so.
And then, if you wanna see the existing house, so this is the existing, if you wanna see the, it's pretty much the same, you know, the same form, same massing. They have the two bedrooms now, family room and kitchen. So we basically just, we took the same footprint and just reorganized it to work for the owner's needs, basically.
And you're reducing it from two bedrooms to one, right?
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions to ask at this point? Okay, we'll open to public comment. Is there anyone present who'd like to make a comment for or against this application? Any comments at all? Okay, hearing none. Do we want to, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
No. So you wanna do a first motion?
Who's seated?
She's not seated.
I am seated.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I heard not seated. Okay.
We had to make that clear at the beginning, who was seated.
Yeah, I heard not seated, so, okay.
Well, it's, it's.
I'm the alternate that has listened to the tape, or has, I was actually present for the other, so Nancy asked for me.
Yeah. Okay.
'Cause I'm an experienced alternate. Oops. Yeah, so I made that motion.
Okay. And Russ seconded it?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So, motion passed unanimously. Public hearing is closed, so we're gonna have a quick conversation together about what needs to be considered to vote on this. Anybody wanna lead on this? Anybody have any sort of initial sort of comments?
Well, I think it's all, it's safety upgrade, modern building, better materials, from the foundation up early, and a reduction of bedroom, so less septic use.
Yeah. I know that my neighbors also, I mean, I'm down the street more, but I walk by the house every day, and I think that this is care here.
It's good for the neighborhood?
It's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for them, and I think, really, I don't think these variances are, you know, cutthroat. I think they're pretty, you know, reasonable for what they wanna do. And for the safety, and, you know, the old building, I think it's, yeah, right out, let's do it.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a couple questions to get your, you know how Nancy usually gets yours? So unusual hardship, you guys have a.
Oh, the lot, you know, and the location of the septic, you know, and also the setback.
Wait, reverse like again.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
You got mine? Yeah. And they're changing, you know, the setback in the back, they're going from zero to, you know, adding at least a setback by eliminating, you know, the porch right there, so that's a condition.
That's question number two for you. Question of the.
That's not, that's not.
Yeah, you got reduction in the back deck, right?
Nancy has a slot for that, too, reductions in legal pre-existing.
Yep, yep. So, the lot is the way it is, and we are reducing some pre-existing.
On a small lot.
Right. And, you know, what we, what we have to worry about here is what changes are being made, and the changes seem minimal.
Well, that's, that's number three, which is, is this the minimum variance to address the hardship and allow reasonable use?
Yep. I think we would say, we'd agree on that?
Okay.
Okay.
In harmony with the intent and purpose of the regulations.
And we did not propose any conditions for this application, so I think we're all in agreement on that?
I mean, because the Ledge Light Health District has their own stuff, like it can't be any higher than it is now and all that, right?
Well, they're not asking for it to be any, if, if they were coming in with a higher proposal, they would need to make that clear now, because the variance is saying it will be no higher in the setback than it is now.
Right.
Right, same bridge line.
So, per usual, you're gonna be signing off on the plans as presented, and those plans show a building no taller than it is now.
But I'm just saying, the things that Ledge Light Health District has put, their conditions.
Yeah, they have their own conditions of approval. Again, you don't need to worry about that, because they're gonna need to meet Ledge Light's conditions, whether or not you put that in your motion, either way.
Well, partly because we have new people.
My answer.
Yeah, clarify.
Spread that out.
Okay.
So, in harmony with intent and purposes of zoning regs, do you guys have any comments?
Yeah, and I think with some of the evidence of that is, we have, we have no complaints from neighbors, and.
And a positive one from the neighbors, myself, too.
Neighbors, okay.
And the evidence presented during public hearing, do I read that now?
Yeah, you heard of the, the safety issues there regarding, you know, obviously the existing house is going to fall down unless you guys replace it, so there's a, you sense that you want safer houses in the neighborhood there.
That's what's troubling the most, it's like, you know, the safety issue.
Yeah, and a big, big storm comes through, and it lifts that thing off its foundations and starts scattering it around the neighborhood, that's bad for everybody.
Including, you know, residents, you know, Dan and Lori, we like these people. We don't want them to be.
That should not be.
We don't want them to be.
You're saying if you didn't like them, to be okay with them?
Oh, I start that, Justin.
Don't let anybody get hurt.
Okay, can I just, can I just read through this to make sure I captured everything you guys said correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, so unusual hardship, there are two houses on a small lot, and the location of the septic is, was also considered an hardship. Proposed reduction in legal pre-existing nonconformity, the setback is being updated, I'm sorry, the setback is being improved by eliminating the back porch, all wordsmith acts, it's not for sentence. Minimum variance to address hardship and allow reasonable use, I'm gonna take that out, 'cause you guys just said yes. No agreed conditions of approval, of, yeah. And then, in harmony with intent and purpose of the zoning regs, supported by the neighbors, including a letter of support submitted today, and the house will be updated to become safer for the residents. Is that?
I just have one.
Yeah.
Comment, that I think instead of saying two houses on the same lot, it should say two structures.
Two structures, okay.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna be conjoined into a single structure-ish.
Yes.
Okay.
Two structures.
Okay, so two structures on a small lot, and the location of the septic. Okay.
Hey, and I'm going to ask if someone will support this motion. I'll read it, and you can declare that you've supported this motion, or made this motion to grant, to grant.
Well, do we have to close?
You already closed the public hearing.
But we don't have to close this?
The deliberations, no. The only, the end of your deliberations will be the vote.
Okay.
Okay. So, does anyone would like to make a motion to grant the requested variance to section 513-78 and 513-79 to allow reconstruction of a concrete foundation of one of two existing non-conforming dwellings located on a non-conforming lot in the Soundview Village District per site plans and floor plans and elevations prepared by 360 Designs Plus LLC and dated September 3rd, 2025, and stamped and signed by the ZBA Chair.
Make a motion.
And just let me add this, the applicant, the two conditions which are written in already was, the applicant needs to comply with all conditions listed in Ledge Light Health District approval memo dated October 6th, 2025, and the applicant needs to submit revised plans to the great modifications. Do I strike that out? There were not, my bad, okay.
So, so then we do, we do have a condition?
I suppose.
Then we're gonna use what?
Does that sound correct?
You don't need that information, but if you want to include it, you can.
Okay, my bad.
Yeah, let's just not.
She already had it.
Not, just not include it?
You, they're going to need to comply with Ledge Light, whether or not you make it a condition of approval, so.
And the plan is not compliant?
No, they do, they do, they currently do.
Not only, it's not, it's not that they're anticipating.
It's redundant and unnecessary.
The plans already say that, they're, they're sort of stating what already exists.
My bad, I was just reading off the script.
No, I think, I think those are listed to just make sure you're considering those things, and to say if there's any changes, or, so I think it's a placeholder for the thought, as opposed to what technically needs to be written in the conditions.
Yeah, and so, now ending and asking if anyone would like to make that motion?
Russ made the motion.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes unanimously? Okay, so now we're going to reopen 2512C, 70C spray. And we had listened to information on this from the last meeting, all those that are, who could we clarify who will be voting on this one here?
Again, Russ, because he was not here last time, but as a regular member, needs to clarify that he did in fact listen to the tapes and get that on the record.
Yes, I did.
He said that already.
We.
Just making sure.
It's on the record for his application, we're doing it, so, okay?
And I'll be voting, Stephanie?
I was here, and I'll be voting.
I was here.
Okay. Okay, so we're all clear on who's, who's voting then, you good with that? Okay, so 70C spray, I guess mostly you should sketch out what we've heard already, and then you can form us on the updated issues?
Of course.
Please.
Good evening, for the record, Joe Wren, professional engineer of Indigo in Old Saybrook. Welcome to the new members. In recent memory, hasn't been new faces on, at least in a few years, so, so welcome. You'll see, whether you like it or not, you'll see me a little bit often. Hopefully, hopefully it's a good thing. So last month, we were here, we did a detailed presentation of this application and the plan itself. There is a new plan, which we provided to Eric, and the only changes on that plan were based on Ledge Light Health Department, Health District's comments. So the only changes are related to the septic system, and it's really nothing major. Maybe the elevation is, is different by an inch or two, maybe the leaching system is minor, but it didn't change the house, it didn't change the proposed variances, didn't change any, any of the items that this board really looks into. But we did, last month, if you recall, we, we did not have health approval yet, so that's why we tabled it, and we came back this month. I might be a little repetitive, but I'm just trying to bring the newbies up the, up the speed as well. So now that we have, we resubmitted back, this plan is dated revised through November 10th, so that's the latest and the greatest, and that is the version that Eric has that is approved now by Ledge Light Health District. So now that we have that approval, now this board can move forward. So just in summary, without going through a lot of detail, we're proposing to remove the existing house that is not FEMA compliant, not zoning compliant, along with the shed and the garage that are on the eastern boundary and the eastern side setback as well. Rebuild, remove the old septic system to rebuild a new home that David from 360 Design Plus had showed you also last month, and can show you again if you'd like. The new house will be FEMA compliant. The existing ground around the house now is 4.55 elevation-wise, and the finished floor, based on FEMA, has to go up to elevation 15.5. So it's about 11 feet or so off the ground where the floor elevation has to be. And what we demonstrated last month, and David will show you again, is if this house was not in a FEMA zone, it was sitting on the ground, it would be 24 feet high. So he's designed a 24-foot, one and a half story house, but up that elevation because of FEMA. And he'll go through that section with you as well. All, all of the variances and everything are listed in the application, I don't want to be fully repetitive and go through that. But one little change in the application, Eric just wanted us to break out the 8.8.7, which is the front yard setback from C-Spray Road. We just had one line last time, and we listed two variances. Eric just wanted us to break that up into two lines, and just list them separately, even though it's the same variance number. So that's on here, and you can see that we are expanding or making the non-conformity less, expanding the distance between the street line of C-Spray Road and to the, and to the house steps from 15, if I can read that correctly, 15 or 16 to 22. And then the actual house itself on that side is going from 9.6 to 12.5. So the yellow on the plan are all the existing structures. So you can see that the house itself, the wall of the house is 9.6 feet to that western side setback, and now the dark outline is the actual house, and then this other pink area here are porches and decks, but the outline of the house is in the dark there. So the closest the house gets there is 12.5, or right now, the closest the house is, is 9.6. So we're shifting that over, away from the street line by almost three feet. The other items, of course, the large garage, that's here on the right hand or the eastern setback, and this smaller shed up in the northeast corner, both are non-conforming. Both of those will be removed, and since they will be removed, the non-conforming setback issues related with them also will be eliminated. And then on this side, since the existing house is, is in that area, we kind of held that wall on the eastern side, so that we weren't not introducing a new non-conformity on that side. So we're eliminating those two, and we're maintaining the house where it is in a conforming line, which is just over 30 feet from that property line. So it's conforming on that side. We do need, we can't bring the house this way for two reasons. One is we'd be introducing a new house conformity that we don't have now, and two, two, we have subject tank, we have a pump chamber, and then we have leach field that starts here and wraps around the front to here. So we don't have a lot of latitude to shift, really no latitude to shift the house to the east at all. On the south side, currently, you can see that the, the house is, the actual wall of the house is further to the south, and we are just a little bit non-conforming to that front yard setback, which is C lane, and we are correcting that, we are eliminating that front setback also. So we are, we are eliminating.
Can I just say, to the stairs? Are those the stairs in the front, the pink tee there at the bottom, right?
Yeah, the pink tee are the new stairs, yes.
And that is how many feet from the setback, the stairs?
It's in the table, C lane, street line setback, to the stairs, 26.8 feet at the closest, or we're allowed 25 to the private road.
Yay.
So that is better, that is reduction of non-conformity, or elimination really of a non-conformity. These two structures, eliminations of non-conformity, we're not introducing any new ones. And then on the west side, since we're pulling the house further from that front yard setback, we're making that better. So we're not making anything worse, we're not introducing anything new, any new non-conformity. The only non-conformities that we have, we're making, we're improving those, we're making those better. The other thing, the third thing, is height. So that is one that we're making more, but we're only making it higher because we're required to by FEMA. So as I, as I had mentioned before, David was very creative, one and a half story house per regulations, 24-foot height, and found out what the minimum variance necessary is to put it up and make it FEMA compliant, and we ended up with the height that we have, which is 33 feet. You have a maximum of 24 feet, but of course, a 24-foot house lifted 11 feet up in the air, it just, it can't work, the house would be non-livable. So we've seen these before, and David will show you the section on how that's, you know, that's minimum, we're not, you know, we don't have 12 feet in the garage, where we only need nine, everything is, everything is minimum necessary. The other thing I wanted to just repeat, because it's important for this, for the, for the newbies, the state statute allows you to consider variances for two things. One is hardship based on land, based on the property itself, usually should be unique. And in this case, again, it's a small, it's a small lot, like most are, it's less than the required minimum in the zone, but this one is a corner lot too, so we have two street setbacks. So we have two street yard setbacks, we only have one side yard, and because it's this corner lot, we have to choose which one is going to be the rear, and we had this discussion last time, it's usually the way the house faces and along its frontage, so this one over here is the rear. So we have a 30-foot rear setback, two 25-foot setbacks, so it kind of pinches us into the spot where we are. We have a 12-foot side yard setback on the north side, which is up here, the stash line. So there is, you know, room to shift it that way, however, you can see with the driveway, the side load garage, we need that distance to be able to get the cars in and out of the garage on that side. And the driveway is not paved, the driveway is a pervious crushed stone as well, so we're keeping our impervious down as much as possible. So the one, the second way that you can consider granting variances and/or is reduction of non-conformity, so we already talked about a lot of this, but in summary, section five in the application, it lists all these reductions of existing non-conformity. So we have street line setback on C-Spray Road, there's a reduction, 9.6 to 12 feet of the house, to 12 and a half feet, sorry. Street line setback, there's elimination from C lane. Currently, the closest is 19.1 feet to the existing garage here, and that's being eliminated completely. The new one, which would be the stairs, those are more than 25 feet, as we discussed earlier. C, the number of stories, right now it's a two-story house, which is non-conforming. We're eliminating that non-conformity as well by proposing to build back a one and a half story house to be conforming. D is side yard setback on the north, because this shed is only 2.9 feet or so to the north property line, that is not conforming, that's eliminated. Right now, it's, we're allowed 12 feet, we're 24 feet to the house. Lastly, the rear yard setback on this side, on the east side, we're only 2.9 feet again to the property line with that large garage, that is being eliminated. So that is the, the fifth item that we're either eliminating or improving the non-conformity. So before I turn it over to Dave, the last, last time we were here, we went through a lot of these details, but then there was a discussion about the letters from the neighbor to the north. And they are at this location, 64 C-Spray Road, last name Lally. So we've done, Dave's done some work, I just, I printed out a GIS map, and have several copies of these, and we drew these blue lines on here to show that from that house at 64, there are at least three ways between other structures where you can get a peek of the water. Even though there are no view easements or rights over these other properties to get it, by looking between existing structures or down the street, there are at least three opportunities to see water from the house, and all three will remain with this. Dave will show you some differences in vertical bulk and so forth, but I just wanted to, I thought this was interesting, and I brought a few copies of this, so you guys can see.
We're going to make this exhibit number one. Oh. How about? B1? We label it B1, this is our second day?
I think we're checking, right? Are we checking?
We got exhibit three last time, this would be four.
Four, okay.
Exhibit four, thanks.
Okay, so then I have exhibit five for you, so David prepared this one, it's the same schematic, but he superimposed the footprint of the new house on there. So you can see that the three, you know, they're, they're tight, and there's no view easement that, you know, allows a 100-foot swath of land to be preserved, but there are little peaks, and you'll see from the ground pictures out to the water, you'll see what those look like momentarily.
Oh, you know, you had showed us a picture on the phone, and we were going to make that an exhibit, did that ever get submitted and made any?
I did email that to Eric that night, but I also have a paper copy tonight.
So do we have the right exhibit numbers, including that?
We included that.
Dave, is that going to be this one?
I have, I have that plus a, so this is the one.
Guys, one more time, you're talking with everyone else, please.
So this is the picture that Joe had submitted via text or email, I'm sorry?
That would be three from last time.
And then, what we did is we took that image, and then we superimposed the house over that to show, so this picture was taken from the driveway, looking towards the water.
The driveway of number 64.
Yeah, so we just wanted to show, standing from that driveway, the, the way that the house sits in relation to the next house that's on the water, and we're in fact back a good ways from, from the face of that house. So that, from that vantage point, the existing house is actually blocking the view.
This is going to be six then, the amended version of exhibit three?
And will you address the, the measurements that they have gathered?
On this image?
No, not on the image, but in the.
Oh, for the setbacks.
Allow David to go, allow David to go through his exhibits first, and then.
Yeah, because those images.
The new one you just gave to me with the superimposed image will be number six, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Um, question, Eric, I happen to hear that the exhibit four was a photo on the phone that was then emailed, is that, is that incorrect?
Okay, so it was, okay, so which case, everything, if, let's, let's back up a second here. The text, the, the image from the phone that is being submitted tonight, where is that?
No, that was, that was emailed last time.
Okay, but I was saying, you, you printed out hard copies tonight, you said, right? Where are those?
That's your exhibit, I think, four.
You put, I, I put it as exhibit number three, because it was, it had been presented at the last meeting, printed, and.
We are hearing from Amy that that was actually four at the last meeting.
Yeah, three was a building cross-section.
Okay, so we're going to slide down all our numbers here. Everything is going to get renumbered down one, and we'll count for the fact that that was four at the last meeting. Okay, so.
The phone picture is number four now.
Yes, so again, that would be the GIS map is five, the new David Dewey photo is six, and the amended photo of exhibit four is now seven.
Five, six, seven.
Right?
That's what we got here now. Scribbly, but it looks good. Okay, in the case you're trying to make with this, with this, you got another one?
I do, but, yeah, so that.
Okay, the case you're trying to make is, this building sits closer to the street and substantially blocks all or more of the view than your building will, will with the.
Yeah, the existing building that's on the water is much further than the house, and you can see in that image, our new house is actually pushed back from the face of the existing.
And whether this was taller or shorter wouldn't change the view of the water.
Correct.
It would change a little bit of the view of the sky above where the house is right now, but not an additional blockage of the view of. But not an additional blockage of the view of, their view of the water.
Right.
Right, and the other thing to consider, if you take the existing house where it is right now and raise it for FEMA, do not make any changes, raise it for FEMA and it's 11 feet up in the air from where it is.
That's it.
That's, it's closer to the street now, so you're gonna have that volume up higher. So from your window, it's going to be blocking the view.
So there is one other one that I'd like to submit. This is a superimposed image from the middle of the property, looking towards the water. And the, the point to show this is the new raised house, superimposed over the existing house. And again, also to show it's pushed back a little further from the road. And, you know, really doesn't impact from the ground level, any views.
Eight, that would be eight.
Give him this one too.
Can I just clarify?
I didn't give him that one.
Exhibit, exhibit number five, the, or, sorry, this is exhibit seven. Right, this is the superposition on exhibit four. It does show up on the website, and Joe, you wanna look over my shoulder, as page 69 of the existing record? Just to clarify for the.
Yeah, because David, David emailed that to Eric.
The, the one with the superposition is, is already on page 69 of the record. So I don't have a problem with keeping.
I'm gonna write down that down, you just told me here.
I just wanna note that what is today, we labeled as seven, is also page 69 of the electronic record in the town.
Okay, I'm writing that down, just in case we need clarification.
Between what I'm looking at on my screen and this, right?
Same, no. That's why you emailed.
I just wanted to confirm. So I'm, I'm actually, I was just scrolling through, and for whatever this is worth, Eric, this is probably more on your end. I'm not seeing the one that is the image without the superposition. So just wanna make sure that that ends up in the electronic record.
And we've got that labeled as exhibit four. We're talking about this one.
Yes, exhibit four, I could be wrong, but that's totally in the electronic record.
Okay, okay. It will be predicted soon.
Then we just had a couple of other things that we wanted to reiterate from the last meeting. And that was, this is being the minimum required. I believe you already have this as, as an exhibit, correct? This sort of diagrammatical section?
I remember we had the height, the vertical heights. Cause I remember having a question about.
That was sent today.
Oh, today, okay.
Okay, so you guys do have this one?
I, I have some.
Yeah, I got it.
I have exhibit three from last time, a building cross section of a proposed dwelling with elevation. I think that was at the latest.
I believe that was.
This was sent out today, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is not that.
No, I know.
That was given in last time.
Yeah, I believe it did.
This is from last time.
So the, sort of the goal of this is to show that what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a 24 foot high house that starts at FEMA's required elevation. You know, basically showing that this is the minimum required to build this house. So what we did is we have our first floor elevation. We come down one foot for a typical floor structure. And then we have 14 inches for a beam. And then there's a portion of, you know, we call them standoffs to hold the beam up. And then when we take all of our siding down, that puts us pretty much right at the flood elevation. You know, giving us our, our proposed ridge height at the, I believe, 33 feet from average grade. So that's kind of where we derived that height from, you know, backing into it from our design flood elevation, our minimum floor system required, and then our allowable 24 feet. And then that's also the, you know, the intent of this image here. And I'll pass this around.
That'd be number nine?
This was, this was submitted today. Or last night, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, right, except.
No, this is.
It's already in?
It's already.
So the goal of this image is, the red represents the existing ridge height. Right, so that, so if we took that ridge and drew a line, we'd be here at 23, 5, and 5 eighths. Then if we lift that to meet FEMA, the house would then be at 32 foot, 4 and 7 eighths, which did leave us another 6 and a half inches to meet that 24 foot height restriction. Cause the existing house is, you know, someone wrong, 23 foot 6, right? So that's the extra 6 inches at the top. So as you can see, essentially, if we take that existing house that's already there, and again, that's another one with, you know, subcar structure, which we'd have a really difficult time lifting that up. I'm not even sure if it would stay together. So we took that house, lifted it up to meet the FEMA requirements. We're essentially at the same elevation. So we just kind of want to diagrammatically show that so you guys could see.
You're not increasing the volume of the height?
Correct, yeah, I mean that.
Based on anything else except for.
Yeah, cause that ridge, the top of that ridge is at the 24 feet.
Well, so the, the existing house is a two-story house. So now we have a one and a half story, so there's less second story volume.
Bulk in the height, in the highest part of the house.
Would you agree to no curricula?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, ornamental?
Always had a different job. Yeah, we would definitely agree to no architectural projections above the ridge.
There you go, I like that, you like that phrase, no architectural projections?
Yeah, I like that, okay.
It's where eggs stay, so that's a good thing.
Only a ridged vent.
You know why that?
You need the ridged vent.
Cause we do, we do understand that we do want to be aware of bulk in the neighborhood. And if you can keep it minimum, you know, for having the same building FEMA compliant.
Yeah, our first struggle was the two-story, you know, when you try to, you tell an owner that, okay, you have a two-story house now, you have to reduce that to a one and a half story. And what does that mean and look like? So that, that's one of the very first challenges. And then David has to work with everything from top down, from roof pitch. You can see the, the roof pitches are fairly shallow on this. Because if we make it steeper, the ridge is gonna be higher and it's gonna be more than 33 feet. Also, the interior ceiling heights, right? You know, they're not 12 feet and like this. Otherwise, again, we'd be way over that. So everything is, you know, minimum necessary to get a 24 foot house above FEMA. And that's what's demonstrated here.
What's the before and after of the square footage?
I think we had that in the chart.
A strong figure.
So we are at, I believe it was 24.9% FAR.
That's proposed.
So we're 2146 is proposed. Original was 1643, 19.1.
So what's the square footage of what's happening?
Now.
Yeah.
Well, FAR is 2146. But that includes, so we have some covered porches. Yeah, we have covered porches. We did get rid of all the garages and the sheds. But we have, you know, exterior decks with cover.
Right, but the garages and sheds don't count, this living area. I'm just curious, so like the house, the house itself? I was interested in knowing what the existing square footage is of the house.
The shed and the garage do count, per your definition, the floor area.
No, no, in the second floor, I was curious of the living area.
The living area of the house. I don't, I don't know if we have that number. We, we have, per your definition, we have existing GFA 1643 and proposed GFA 2146. So there's 500 square foot increase in GFA. But again, it's the shed and the garage, whatever those.
We're gaining 500 square feet.
In total GFA on the site. But we're still, we're allowed 25% and we're not asking for variance for that. We're within the 25% allowed.
Thank you.
Sorry, we just, when we calculated, we just said FAR.
It's just when you, when you're looking at these drawings that two doors goes one half over the other.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's just helpful to know, it's like, okay, so aside from the garages, sheds, all of that, what is, how does the house change if, when it's involved?
Right, right.
How the assessor's card? It says that the first floor is 560 and the second floor is 528. So approximately 1100 or 1080 or so of existing house. I don't know how big the existing, the proposed house is for square foot. So that, that's gonna require Dave to tell us.
Does it look like it's much bigger?
The front porch is separately on the assessor's card. So the assessor's card breaks out the porch.
Okay.
Right, so the porch would count in GFA.
Yes, but we're just, but Keala's asking, as far as inside the house, living space. If the existing one is 1080, how many square feet is the living space inside the house?
Yeah, so I would have to subtract out the porches on this one to give you an accurate.
Cause we have covered porches too on the proposed, so.
Yeah.
Do apples, I mean, per your definition, covered porches count, sheds count, garage's count.
We're not talking floor area ratio, we're not talking about coverage. She just wants to know, how many square feet of living area do people have inside the house? That, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Because from the, the drawings, the superpositions, this, the new house looks much bigger than the old house. And I know that you're saying that it's, it's just an elevation, but, you know, it's very difficult to tell from these drawings because this house looks like it has a lot more going on here than the house underneath it.
That's because of the FEMA lift.
Okay, and again, they're, they're showing, I'm reading Joe's plans right here, 1292 of house.
Okay.
So the existing one is about 1080.
Right.
The going is 1292, they're getting about 200 square feet.
That's my answer, thank you.
That's your answer, okay?
Yeah, it looked, it looked worse because it's.
That's why, it doesn't look like it's 200 square feet. It looks like it's more.
Plus, plus what's key on top of that is we meet coverage.
Thank you.
We meet coverage, we're not asking for a variance coverage, we meet floor area. So even if it is bigger, it can be bigger, within the allowable regulations.
I was asking to clarify for my sense of perception, based on these submitted exhibits.
Yeah, what's, what's difficult is
And now I have.
When you have a picture of the existing house and then you show the higher one for FEMA, it looks, it covers a lot more sky.
Yes.
Because you're lifting 11 feet off the ground.
And I realize that's garage and underneath.
If we, you know, next time, what we'll do is we'll take the existing house and we'll also lift that to FEMA and then we'll compare the two.
That would absolutely be helpful.
That would be a better comparison for you.
But you were doing mostly view as what you were trying to demonstrate there rather than.
View of water, right.
Right.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so with that, unless there are any questions, I just, you know, just going back to that exhibit four, you know, looking from all the front yards down Sea Spray Road, there's a pretty wide view of the water. That is not going to change. The house has stepped back a little bit. You know, the existing house is just barely in the picture. That's, the taller house is the one that's closer, closer to the water. The short portion of the existing house is right over the roof of the vehicles there. And that wall of this house is even gonna be further to the left on that picture. So this view with the flagpole and water at the end of the road is going to remain unchanged. From that perspective. Any other questions?
Is this where I ask about Leglite approval?
Well, you haven't submitted a letter from Leglite saying that they've managed to. I think you're good on that one. It did take several rounds, and I think Joe can testify about how painful it was for him to get through the process there. But as of late last week, I think that they managed to get through Leglite. And I think they're, they should be, from Leglite's perspective, assuming they, again, Leglite was very specific in their letter that it has to be done exactly as proposed. So Leglite's gonna be watching carefully. But if they do it exactly as proposed, Leglite says it meets the code.
Okay, we were hoping to have the approval last month and then there was some training and so forth. And Cheryl was unable to finish it. So then she finished a review, she had a couple more tweaks to the plan, which we did. We had this November 10 revision, submitted it back to her and received the final approval.
Okay, so anybody have any additional questions to ask at this point? Okay, so let's open to public comment on this case. If there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of the application, come on up. Anyone who would like to suppose, speak in opposition or general comment, come on up. Introduce yourself so that we have this on the record.
I'm Mike Lally.
Tom. Tom Lally, 64 Sea Spray Road, both of us.
Okay, go ahead.
Basically, you know, we're opposed to the setback where it's gonna be because it's basically gonna be straight up from there and it's gonna be closer to our house. It's gonna block like three quarters of our water view. And that's a very deceiving photo looking down the street from our house. Right now, we have a pretty nice water view, actually. And the house is basically gonna go, right now, that porch, we actually look over to water. It's, it's just a one-floor porch on the house. And you're counting that as living space, but it's really not. It's, it's just a seasonal porch there. And the house is basically gonna go, you know, straight up three stories from there. And so it's, and, and closer to our house. So as it gets closer to our house, it's actually gonna block the view more.
So it's gonna be moved over 10 feet closer to our house on 64 Sea Spray. And it's gonna be, according to this, 12 and a half feet from the, the street setback. But my brother and I measured it and it's, it's, the existing structure right now is 15 feet. So they're actually reducing the setback and putting a structure that's, that's gonna be much, much higher. So essentially blocking like, we assume, now if you take a picture from the end of our driveway, yeah, it's not gonna probably have as much of an impact. But from our house, which is in the middle of our lot, it has a dramatic impact for our second floor view and, and within our house. And it appears to be, you know, a bigger house that's, that's closer to us. So, you know, we've been there for 50 years as a family and we would like it to be adhered here to the 25 foot street setback for Sea Spray Road. That's, that's our position. I know that there's a lot of considerations for the septic systems and what other things. But, you know, that's our position. So I don't know, you know, what our say has to do with it, but it means a lot to us.
I mean, basically where the, the septic tank is on the eastern side of the property, if they move the house over that way and move the septic, I mean, they'd have plenty of room somewhere else for the septic. It just seems like the way the septic is right now, it's basically, it does put the house where it is. Because they can't move the house any further over that way. But if they move, did move it to the east, I mean, there's a lot, there's room there, basically. It wouldn't block anybody's view. And it would still, and with the 25 foot setback, and then they could, they could have the septic maybe, you know, they'd have actually, you know, that whole front area still and maybe they could hook it around the front instead of the other side of the house, the, the Sea Spray side. It just, I mean, it really drastically blocks our view.
Is there anything you want to point out on the map?
Yeah, if you want.
Yep. I mean, you're saying if they move it this way, it would benefit you more?
It would benefit, yes, because basically right now, I mean, these are just glimpses right here. We're looking between some houses and trees and bushes and stuff, so that's sort of.
Yeah, we have to clarify what we're aiming at. We're looking at exhibit number six and we're looking at angles of view from the, people, from the Lally's, Lally's property and how it's impacted by the construction.
Because right now, we actually, you know, can see right through, because this is a lower porch on the Sea Spray side of the house, so we actually look over that, we can see the water. We have a huge view and now this is basically.
Okay, and, and what you're saying is, at ground level, it doesn't have that impact, but on your second floor windows, it does.
But even, no, ground level, at, at, ground level, we can see over this porch. This house is pretty low right now. So basically, we can see the water from the first floor of our house. Second floor, you can see even more. But basically, because it's just a porch here right now where you look over it, but it's gonna be three, it's gonna basically be a three-foot structure.
Three stories.
Three stories. Not living, it's, cause part of it's, you know, to meet the FEMA code, I realize that. But basically, it's gonna, it's gonna be straight up. And by moving it closer to our house, that impacts the view even more.
It's not two stories, it's one and a half.
It's one and a half stories, okay, one and a half stories, okay. But still, it's still 33 feet though, so it's still fairly substantial.
But we question exist, that the measurement of what was proposed.
It's hard to do that. But basically, um, you know, there's room on this side of, the west side of the house. If they move the house back and had, you know, complied with the 25 feet from Sea Spray, that would totally eliminate the issue that we're having. And these other views they're talking about, there's a big tree right here. You can see the tree actually, so, um, it's, and, you know, we really don't have, these are not really water views here. But this is a huge water, we have a very nice water view looking this way.
And we put it in the letter with the, you know, pictures that we took from our home, you know, and what we anticipate, you know, the new structure would be and basically would block the majority of the, you know. And I think this is inaccurate because this is taken from a street view.
It's already in the folder.
Yeah.
You just sent it in today, so we have copies we can give everyone.
Exhibit number nine, and it is.
Oh, he came in late today, I don't know if I got it up there or not.
Two down there and two more down here. And this is out of your second story window looking at the 41.
Yes, correct, yes.
This is the new house.
It's just my little.
We don't have any pictures with the old house. Can I confirm, Joe, you have a copy of the letter?
It was submitted to Craig.
Can I see that?
He said that he was.
I just want to make sure that the applicant has a copy of your letter.
Craig emailed it to us.
Thank you. So Pete, you might be interested in this, which exhibit is this?
Oh, I haven't seen that.
With the drawing?
Pardon?
With the drawing, which exhibit, so we could say what they're looking at?
Yeah, that's um, exhibit number, I'll say that's eight, I'm not sure, number eight.
So you're looking right over the porch here now?
Yes, exactly. So we have this old, you know, and the thing is, it's going to be moved, this is going to be closer to us too, by 10.8 feet. So it's gonna, it will affect the view more. This is probably just showing the setback from the road.
Yeah, which was one of your concerns, so it is setback further.
From, you know, the porch and stuff like that. Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, I understand that. So, but as far as the height, that's where we're really, moving closer, it really does block a lot of, a lot of our view. Um, yeah, so, it's a, it is a big difference. It doesn't, it doesn't, especially moving closer to us too, that'll affect it too. Thank you.
Because you are where?
We're right, right here.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, are they going to be changing the ground elevations in the house? I mean, right now, that.
Well, they've got, the whole thing is to meet FEMA compliance, yeah. And that's a hard one for us to budget.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Does that mean ground elevation has to increase for us?
Okay, we're not going to have the ZVA answer those questions. If you want to ask them, the applicant.
No problem, okay.
The applicant.
No, no problem, yeah, thanks.
So was there a question?
Um, yeah, is the ground level on the property going to come up at all?
So.
We're worried about runoff because that tends to.
Can you come up to the tape?
Sure. Um, so all the elevations are on the plan, so first of all, height is measured from the existing grade, so that doesn't matter if you're putting five feet of fill or not, height is measured from the existing, where it is now.
Are you bringing in fill?
So they don't allow you to put in two feet of fill and then count your height from there, we have to count from the lowest point. Fill is brought in for the septic system because it's required. So the septic system is mounted, we have to be two feet above groundwater, we have our system and then we have to cover over the system. So yes, there is a mound on the south side, not on our side. Um, on your side, there's going to be a pervious, crushed stone driveway and the grade is going to be approximately the same as it is today on your side.
Is this fence the property line?
Yes, more or less.
More.
Okay, do we want to prompt any response?
Yeah, no, I have some responses.
Okay, sure. Is that timing for that now?
So, number one thing I want to clarify, and Stephanie asked us before, is when you measure to the existing house, did you measure from the edge of the pavement?
No, no, three feet, over three feet in, so behind the mailboxes, that's what indicates on the.
GIS map.
GFA.
Yeah, so it has to go from the property line, so not from an imaginary line or not from the edge of the road.
Yes, it's definitely not from the edge of the road.
The lot, the, the house, so you have the lower porch section, right? The lower porch section counts as the structure, it counts as the house. That is currently 9.6 feet from the proper line, based on the A2 survey. The current proposal is to have the wall of the house 12.5 feet. There's not going to be any part of the, any wall of the house that's 12, closer than 12.5 feet to the proper line.
Yes.
So it's actually coming in almost three feet to the left. As you're looking down the road from your property, it's actually coming in. Now, if you take the existing house, even with that low porch that you can see over, and you lift that to FEMA, 11 feet up in the air, you're no longer seeing over that porch. So if you just take the existing house, where it is, what it is, exactly like this, and you lift that.
Reference that one actually, because that one's showing their view, the way they claim their view is, which seems true.
So they did nothing else other than lift for FEMA, like FEMA wants them to, and Tom wants them to, it's obstructing that view. So with this proposal, that wall, you can see it there, that's where the existing house is. I don't know what exhibit this is, I know we're not supposed to be pointing and whatever.
Exhibit number eight.
On exhibit number eight, you can see the existing house is further to the west, this is the closest wall of the proposed house. So even though there's more bulk here, which you would also have if you lifted this house, imagine that house lifted up to that same elevation, you have more on the west side that's in your view shed. With this new house, we're pulling that back, that distance, and so it's actually this structure that's in your view now from eye level is going to actually be open because we're improving the setback from the property line. We're not getting closer.
But you're moving the house closer to us, which actually impedes more of the.
We could go as close as 12 feet off your property line, believe it or not, and we're 24 feet off your property. So we're double the setback on the north side. Um, this happens a lot, we see it a lot, but we're required to, if, if, if we didn't have to raise for FEMA, the house would be approximately what it is there, more or less. Um, this extra bulk here is because we have to lift 11 feet off the ground for FEMA.
Your house is not lifted.
No, it is not, no.
Is it in the flood zone?
Yes, it is.
I mean.
Yes, it is.
So if you needed to improve your house.
Yeah, we'd have to make it FEMA compliant, yes.
And nobody's happy about this, I guess it's a little too editorial, but you see this all over the place and it's just the lay of the land now. Uh, people are taking these cute little cottages that are sitting on the sand on the beach and now they're 10 feet in the air. And that's something we're sort of, I guess, required to comply with. We, we have to at least consider that as a important zoning issue.
What about, what about the required 25-foot setback from Sea Spray Road? I mean, why, why is that not?
Well, it has a pre-existing.
I know it is pre, so when it gets modified, it doesn't have to.
Well.
I mean, I know he's saying it's moving three feet, I'm saying it's, it's actually reducing.
If we said, as just a point of argument, that he said he just wants to lift it to FEMA compliance, he has a pre-existing non-conformity, it'd be really hard for us to say no and have FEMA look at us and say, you guys.
Yeah, you can't.
You sort of can't. So if we can get any compromises, which I think do exist in this plan, that's the, that's unfortunately seems to be the best that you can do in today's world. The, the building has to get lifted if we are complying with FEMA, so.
And if you look down the future, like maybe someday you'll be in front of us saying, we'd like to lift, that'll totally change your view, but the people behind you might have the same concern that you have. But you know what I'm saying, it's like FEMA has a lot to say about what's going on here. And right, little by little, people are doing what they're doing.
And a lot of the beaches, it's the first one, and this would be our beach, but yeah.
Right, right, but you know, somebody has to be first, somebody will be after them. I mean, it's, it's a growing phenomenon.
25 years from now, they'll all be lifted, because when you do 50%, whatever the value the house is worth, which is usually pretty low, say 200,000, 204,000, just of the house, not the land, the land doesn't count. Soon as you put 100, 120 into that house, then you have to lift for FEMA this high. So eventually, over time, and that's why FEMA has that built into the program, eventually over time, all the houses will be lifted that do any sort of improvement.
Yeah, and, and really, as, as stewards of a town, we have to think about a whole bunch of these properties, not yours probably, but a lot of properties are built sort of just stick and plywood and you do want the owners to improve those properties. And when they do that, then suddenly it hits the FEMA threshold and we got to lift them. I, I don't think they're pretty at all. I mean, that's me personally, but, but you can't say that drives our consideration here.
It's safety.
Is there, is there any way you think you could move it at all?
So that was my, my next response, but first of all, I just wanted to, because recently we've seen pictures and photos of the Outer Banks in North Carolina and those houses are even lifted, but you can see what happens with sea level rise and storms come in and just, mother nature just takes it back. So with, you know, the, the FEMA lift, it really saves, I had people, um, they had a house burned down and the next door neighbors burned down in the nor'easter in like 2010 or something and they had to rebuild the houses. And now since they had to rebuild, they had to be like 15 feet off the ground. I'm like, this is crazy, what are you doing to us? The next year, we had Irene and the following year, we had Sandy and they called, they were the first ones to call saying, thank you for getting us up there because the cameras, they watched remotely and they saw the water washing around under their house, everything in the house was perfect. And if it was down lower, it would have been washed away. I mean, I just use that as a story, because it's a good, two years in a row after that, it really just showed everybody why we have to lift this high. I agree, they don't look the best. The house above, the bottom up, it looks beautiful, but below, because it's lifted off the ground, it's so high, but that's why we have to do it. Um, moving to the east, we have a couple of issues there. So right now, we're right on the setback line, the 30-foot setback line, if we move it, we're non-compliant on that side and that's an introduction of a new non-conformity to the house, um, that this board is supposed to consider against not introducing any new non-conformity. So we do have the garage and the shed, but the house currently is not non-conforming on that side, so we'd be introducing that new non-conformity. More importantly, the septic, like it said in that Leged Light letter, it has to go precisely, Eric mentioned this before, it has to go precisely to the inch where it's proposed because the groundwater is very shallow there. Um, we had clarifications from the state DPH, we went back and forth with Leged Light Health District. It can't go on the north side, that's where the driveway is and it would have to be raised. But more importantly, on the north side, on your side, the soil, there's some fill there and the soil depths do not even meet the minimum standard, um, to put a code compliant septic in on the north side. On the south side, the soil, the soils do meet the minimum.
It's all fill, this is hilarious fill.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a couple of feet of fill here, as you get closer to the other road on the other side, there's just less fill and there's more natural soil, it was all done with Leged Light and the Health District and everything, it's all recorded. We went out there during high tide, we measured all the groundwater, we know precisely uh, the depth of soil and we met the minimums on the south side, did not meet the minimums on the north side, so that septic has to go there and the, the code determines the length of it, so it has to wrap around that side and then we have the tanks on the plant on the east side. We have to be 10 feet from the house to the tank and then you have the tank and then the tank has to be certain distance to the property line. Down that whole eastern property line, if you all remember this from last time, there's a, there's a small drainage system, neighborhood drainage system. And it's leaky, it's kind of handmade, we can't have our septic system within 25 feet of that because the septic leachate will go into the drainage, which happens throughout the beach associations, um, right now, but we can't create a situation that does that. So along the eastern side, we had to replace some of that with, with what's called tight pipe, so the water can't get into it or the, or the drainage structures. And also along, is that Sea Lane, along the south there, along that road, there are some catch basins in the road and there, there's a catch basin, that's an association catch basin, but it's actually on, I can show you on the plan here. Um, and this is all kind of important because it plays into the whole thing. So there's a catch basin right here, that's actually on the private property, it shouldn't be. Um, because of the septic system has to go here, you can see the shape of it, we can't have that within 25 feet, so we were relocating that catch basin to, in the street where it should be, um, and then reconnecting the pipes. And there's a pipe that goes from this catch basin to this catch basin, that pipe is also being replaced with solid tight pipe. Um, and that's going to be a betterment for everyone around because no longer the leachate is going to be able to sneak into that leaching system. Um, and we're meeting all the code requirements, so we have to be 25 feet, if you look at all these dimensions, we're right, you know, 25.0, 25.1, we have to be 15 to property lines and we're 15.2, 15.0. Uh, we have tanks on this side, so that, there's no room to shift the, the house this way because then the septic would have to shift away from the house and then we get um, non-compliant to the distance of the drainage system on that eastern side. So we, as Eric read it, read before, this has to be exactly where it is, it's really the only way with all the several iterations that we've done, really the only way that that system works, so that can't change at all. Um, and again, here, this yellow, that's the existing house that we're lifted, now we're more this way.
And all that catch basin work and all that's at the homeowner's expense?
It's at the homeowner's expense and Cheryl also, rightfully so, she wanted us to go to the association and make sure they were on board with it and it's an improvement to their association drainage system. So, um, the president of the association came out and, um, he loved the idea, brought it to the board, David was at that meeting and the board agreed that this is acceptable. Um, when the source come through.
If.
When, if the source come through, um, they're also upgrading drainage at that point in time. So this is kind of like temporary fix, so when they put all new in, um, that's what we were told by the board, they just, they wanted to make sure that we weren't going to adversely affect anything that may or may not be done in the future. Um, and they agreed that it would not, would actually just improve the current situation.
I do have one question, that propane tank, the 500 gallon propane tank, that's going to be underground?
Yes.
How did, how would, how do they anchor that so it's not going to float up when that property goes underwater? Because that goes underwater quite a bit, that property.
That's a good question and whenever we do a underground propane tank, it's an enclosed vessel, so it can float like a bobber, a septic tank could float like a bobber, believe it or not. Um, so we have to do anti-boilancy calculations for the septic tank that are on here, make sure the septic tank is more heavy than the water that's over it and surrounding it or what would replace it, so it doesn't flow out of the ground. Similar to the propane tank, that would flow if it was submerged, so there's a concrete slab poured and then stainless steel straps over the top of it, holding it down, concrete slab. That's what has to be done by code.
I was curious about that.
And then there's a, it's a good question, and then there's a relief valve for the relief, the pressure relief. Um, for FEMA, they also have a regulation that we have to bring a one-inch PVC pipe over to the house and bring that snorkel up above the flood elevation, so if it is submerged, it can still relieve pressure. So it's pretty technical, it's to the inch. We've done everything to make it the minimum variance necessary, improve where we could, eliminate where we could, get a better septic system, get a better drainage system. So overall, everything is a vast improvement over what's there today.
And again, Joe, can you speak to the coastal area management application?
Yes, that was the last thing on my, I think Eric had mentioned, there is a coastal area management application. Um, you're going to start seeing a lot more coastal area management applications because as of October 1st, the state changed their rule. And any, any building within the coastal zone, whether it's in the flood zone or not, requires a CAM application. Uh, so you will see many, many of these. Um, I'm not sure how the state's going to process them all, but that's, we'll have to figure out. Um, so for this one, this application was submitted prior to that October 1st deadline, so it doesn't apply. Um, but we submitted a CAM anyways because it's typically wouldn't be a CAM exempt, you know, it's a single-family new build. Um, we're more than 100 feet to coastal resources, but we filed a CAM application in the beginning anyways, that's for your consideration as well. Um, and things they look at generally are water quality, FEMA compliance, LID or Low Impact Development features of driveways. So what we did here is we made this driveway to sideload, so we need this distance and all that for the sideload garage for safe pulling in, backing out, pulling out from the street forward. Um, we're required to do a paved apron between the street and the property line. And you can see here that it's more than, more than three feet from the edge of the road to the property line, it's more than three feet in. Um, but we're required to do that apron, but then all the rest of the driveway is going to be a pervious crushed stone, so it's not asphalt, so that's able to absorb into the ground. We have the house, of course, we're eliminating these two structures, we're improving the septic system, um, taking out some of that fill, replacing it with sand. We have a code compliant septic system, which is much better than the system that's there now sitting in the groundwater. Um, and then we're also improving the drainage on the eastern side and along the southern side, not only to accommodate the septic system, but right now, anything can get into that, whether it's septic, it's fill, anything, because it's, it's very leaky, handmade, you know, dry block, catch basins, uh, leaky joint pipes, uh, mostly block or filled with water. So all those things combined, and then on top of all that, the FEMA compliance, that's another, you know, our special flood hazard zones are a coastal resource, basically, and we are FEMA compliant.
Who do you submit the CAM? Who does that?
Goes to the town, it's a town required application, the town refers it to the state just for their advice, just advisory.
And the CAM stands for?
Coastal area management.
Coastal area management.
Management, okay.
Yeah, sometimes you'll see CSP, Coastal Site Plan.
Okay.
Um, when we have a, a CAM that's applicable, we'll label our plan Coastal Site Plan, CSP. And then you get your little C after your application on the agenda.
Okay, that's good to know. I mean, these are New Year's names.
Well, no, they, they always existed, however, they weren't required when you were building a brand-new house. Under the new regulations from October first, tear down, all tear down rebuilds are going to need a CAM application. Now, if they're not going to ZBA, they're gonna go to the zoning commission. You, you just happen to be seeing it, because it's, you weren't even getting this application anyway.
But any board or commission can review them, so someone could come in, you know, zoning has a full agenda, Eric can say, okay, I'm gonna give this to ZBA, they have a light agenda, so just look at this CAM application. So we've already done that, we've been in front of ZBA, what are you here for? No variances, just to look at the CAM application, but it has to be by a board or commission, the staff cannot review and approve it.
But, I mean, they're reviewing your septic and stuff? I mean, that's Ledgely Light.
They review, well, yeah, Ledgely Light does that. Um, DEP, again, they're just advisory, but they look at the project as a whole. Say if we were quadrupling the size of the house, paving the driveway, putting more parking over here, um, things like that, we weren't FEMA compliant, you know, I mean, the town won't like that anyways, but those are the things that they're looking for. They wanna make sure that it's smart development, you know?
The agency used to be called the Office of Long Island Sound Programs, it's now, it's a different fancy name. It, the goal is to make sure that the quality of Long Island sound is being preserved. So they're, what they're trying to do is make sure that what they're doing here is not gonna otherwise impair Long Island sound. So again, from what you've heard from Mr. Ren, he's explaining how he's designed it to try and make sure that the water quality is not gonna otherwise impair Long Island sound.
But if it came upon us, we would not be evaluating all of that to say it's gonna impede the water quality?
Well, that's what the CAM application's supposed to be doing. I mean, that's part of, part of your review, part of the findings theoretically you're making tonight, is that it meets the CAM goals under your, under the regulations.
You have CAM application before.
Yeah.
This is not, this is not a first time.
Right. What's new now is it's more, much more overreaching. So there, there were exemptions before, and many projects, new, new single-family house built were exempt, especially if you were more than a hundred feet away from the, the resource. Now, nothing, pretty much nothing is exempt unless you're like putting railing on your deck, right?
And, and since it's anything within a thousand feet of a navigable water body, basically half the town is now covered by CAM applications.
Right.
So we're gonna be getting a lot more CAM applications than we did before.
So back to our neighbors, I think we should. Our neighbors' concerns. David, did you, you gonna say something?
I have something right now, I'm just saying about three times with a fifty percent rule a little bit. And that's kind of, this is sort of how we arrived at lifting the house and basically restructuring the whole house was, you know, we looked at the fifty percent, which allowed us a hundred and seven thousand dollars to work on the property, to work on the house, and realized really quickly that we weren't gonna be able to do anything. So I hate to give you more exhibits, but um, these are some images of the inside of the house. So you can see, you know, very minimal structure, the kitchen is extremely dated. And then, you know, in that picture, I think I've got one here, the staircase does not meet code, you know, by width requirements, by rise and run, so and you can just see like the shag carpet and all that kind of stuff. But you know, once we started looking at what we had to do to this house to, to bring it up to two thousand twenty-five, um, we're way, way beyond the hundred and seven thousand dollars, so right there triggers FEMA. And um, in the way the house is structured, you know, I don't even think we could lift this.
Some of it labeled both of them together as exhibit ten? All three? Yeah. And this, the point of these is just to show renovation are gonna bring you above the fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't think too many of us.
Even if you decided to renovate the existing house, it's still going up eleven feet.
Right.
But here's the house still, existing. If I were to guess, forties or fifties?
It said nineteen thirty-three.
Yeah, was that this one?
So this is going, this is exhibit number ten, three item, three photos?
If I might update myself with that, considering it was in the house that I grew up in. And that house was built in nineteen twenty.
Um, are we, are we satisfied from the audience that we've had a chance to make comment?
Well, is there anybody else?
I'm just wondering if we see, if we could use any way to get a copy of that photo of the post. That's good to hear that it's moving further back from setbacks.
We do have one extra one here. You got it, maybe? I've got the one, it says, I think it's number eight on my list. Is it this one?
Oh, is it that one right on the bottom?
The one on the bottom, that's what he all. I've got that one as number eight here. Yeah, number eight.
And those will all be in the record, right?
Yes, they will.
They'll all be in the record.
Okay. For those timeframes for building this house.
Do we have to speak to the owner? Um, I don't think they're gonna have it for the summer, so probably September, this September to the next June.
Okay.
So they won't start till next summer?
I believe. I don't think they're gonna be.
Because of the hammer, the hammer law in the summer, so they don't have enough time to start and build the house now, uh, before the hammer law.
That's because.
So usually what they'll do is wait till after Labor Day, and then try to, and then seven, eight months to get it before.
I don't think they're having to make that go ahead. Can't imagine Hollywood.
Yeah. We, we don't know, we're not saying, we're not promising anything, but based on what we see.
Anybody else want to speak?
I think we're okay, are we done with comments from the room? Okay. Anybody have any follow-up questions? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing for case twenty-five twelve C seventy C spray? Ross? Uh, all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Uh, unanimous, uh, public hearing is closed. So now what we've got to do is have, uh, make a record of the comments, um, of our deliberations over the case.
And only voting members.
Yeah, and, yeah, oh, yeah, I should read that script. Only voting members may participate in deliberations, no, no new information is going to be introduced up to the close of the public hearing. Members may ask staff or ZBA attorney procedural questions. So those of you that are considering voting, anybody want to start a narrative on it? Anybody wanna?
Well, you know, it's, it's complex, and I really appreciate how much they have done to try to move this forward. And I know it's, it feels very expensive, but you know, beyond that, they, I think they've really tried to do what they need to do to try to uh, move the project forward. And I don't see how they could do it otherwise.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it, to us as a board, it's typically felt sort of compelling, i- if it's a FEMA lift
Right.
um, on a property that needs rehabilitation, okay, the, and the issues, the neighbors are totally in order for being frustrated that this is happening.
Right.
But we, I, I think, from my point of view, I think FEMA's a substantial part of this case, I guess, the compelling part of this case for me. But there are reduced nonconformities, there is a reduction from two stories to one and a half.
Yeah, they're getting rid of a couple of structures.
Strictly structured, yeah.
As much as they possibly could, but still, you can't mitigate what FEMA's requiring. You have to do what you have to do, and um, and that, I feel, you know, sorry for the neighbors, and, but again, you know, I don't know how many years or F they can come and, you know, maybe they're gonna have the same issue at some point.
And then it starts an epidemic of one person raises their house, and then the next person raises their house, and pretty soon, you have an entire neighborhood that's raised up eleven feet, which I guess is the goal.
Yeah, I understand. So you guys, you guys, it's an epidemic. FEMA feels that as a good thing.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not attractive, but I understand why it is.
Well, it could preserve a whole neighborhood if everybody does that, you know?
You know, just historically, the first cases that, of these that came before the board, everybody's standing there shaking their head and saying, all right, the, the house is gonna be up here?
Right.
And then you get to say, well, if FEMA's been told that we keep saying no to that, that's an issue.
Right.
Yeah, we're sort of compelled to.
Very limited in what we can do.
I think.
And the other piece that I, I wanna make, I guess, um, do the zoning regulations say that people's views are sacred?
No.
Yeah, no, they.
They're not.
You need to just recognize future.
And it's something I think it's natural for us as human beings to consider and see if we can negotiate our way around an outcome that minimizes that impact. But you can't stop somebody from lifting their house FEMA compliant.
Right.
Because of.
And you know, we want neighbors to be able to appreciate neighbors and get along and not, you know, fences and things like that, but you know, what it comes down to, putting the requirements in, FEMA and or the other, all the septic things and the extra money they did for the, I mean, that, that's, um, that's hard, hard to, you know, say no to. That's my view.
Sorry, can we just go, I'm trying to pick out everything here.
I think we're just having a conversation, and then we'll get to the script. We okay?
Just, just making sure.
Are we, I, this is me being an idiot. Are we, um, do we make this conversation we're gonna have right now, the strict thing about all these items as the motion, or do we precede the motion by that conversation?
If you really want the technical question, you should have a motion in a second, and then have discussion. But it's common practice, have discussion, and then get everybody's sense, and then culminate into a motion with other conditions, so.
That's how Nancy.
But what have we used to be doing here? What's Nancy do with you?
Oh, yeah.
Does she say, would anybody like a motion, and then you say the hardship is? Is that the way we do it usually?
Yeah.
When I take notes, I'm always on the next page, and then I have to go back.
So we're discussing the evidence that will be used to support the motion. Um, somebody's gonna be asked to, uh, make a motion granting the necessary hardships, what we're outlined, but our logic for possibly, um, granting the variances, unusual hardship, there's a whole bunch about the property that's limited.
Seventy-nine percent, something like that is limited.
Yeah, the setbacks are sort of massive. It's a pre-existing property.
Seventy-nine point four.
Yeah.
All right, so the unusual hardship is that the property is, uh, limited by.
It's got two streets, two front-street setbacks?
We also heard testimony that the septic system has to be in exactly this location, and it dictates what is around.
Yep, yep. Location of the setback limits options.
Right. Okay, so the property is limited due to setback locations, uh, the septic requirements. Anything else?
I mean.
As it just said, there are two fronts, which also further limits your.
Right, makes it an unusual property in that sense.
Right.
And there will be, for item number two, there will be substantial diminishment of pre-existing nonconformities. You've got a couple of buildings, and you've got a movement of, uh, the building away from one of the setbacks.
And one and a half stories versus two.
Okay, one and a half stories dropping down, uh, two stories dropping down to one and a half.
So there were significant reductions in nonconformities. Do you wanna mention the fact that there are some nonconformities were eliminated?
Yeah.
Or just reductions? Like the garage and the, and the shed.
I think you could just generally say that there were eliminations and, and reductions in nonconformities.
Got it.
Right.
Eliminations, got it.
And I don't know if we have to say something about how they fixed the, um, the leakage, you know what I mean?
Oh, the additional.
I mean, yeah, the additional leakage.
Why don't you hold off on that till you get to the CAM portion? That's sort of a different piece.
Okay, all right, that's what I was gonna ask. What is that?
Let's get through the variance hardship issues, and then you have separate findings you need to make for the coastal area management.
Third item of findings would be, is this, where there's a minimum, um, variances required to alleviate the hardship. Yeah, I think so. I think there was so much conversation about that. We did, they did what they could. I mean, they can't be asked to abandon uh, the, the size of building that they have. They diminished it in some ways and expanded in others, but I think it would fit my definition of minimum for achieving this.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, conditions of approval, we're not gonna mention Ledgely Light, because we already had that discussion on the previous variance, we don't need that. Um, nobody came up with any conditions that we had. Oh, yes, yes.
No, no.
No architectural projections, no architectural projections. Thanks. I got it written, I skipped.
Mr. Noe agreed to no architectural projections from the ridge as a condition of approval, if you guys are happy with.
Yeah, and in harmony with intent of zoning regs, uh, you know, I think partly what you have to think about is, is safety issues, and FEMA compliance is a big issue. At least for me.
Biggest.
So the structure will be FEMA compliant, and health and safety
Yep, yeah.
will be improved.
Right. A, a structure that is not code compliant will become code compliant. It's not just FEMA compliant, it's, it's not currently code compliant across this, this structure.
Got it.
Okay, and the evidence presented in the public hearing and reasons articulated by the board within the public hearing is part of what motivates our ideas here? Does anybody want to make a motion to grant with the condition of, uh, no architectural projections on the roof line? Um, the, um, variances of sections eight point eight point six and eight point eight point seven to allow demolition of an existing four-bedroom dwelling in AE twelve flood zone and replace with an elevated FEMA compliant dwelling in the street line setback per the site plans prepared by Indigo Land Designs LLC and dated October, November tenth. November tenth, sorry. Uh, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by three sixty design plus LLC and dated.
I don't know that those were.
I've got here August seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, and then we have the new plans.
Yeah, stamped and signed by ZBA chair.
Those were, we, we covered that on the coastal site plan that, that Mr. Ren gave us. I don't know that Mr. Noe's plans were updated since that.
Eight, eight, seven, yeah.
Eight, seven, okay, so those, that's consistent, okay?
August seventh, yeah. Would anyone, go ahead?
Do we have to list eight, eight, seven twice, because it's?
No, eight, eight point six, eight, oh, 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 'cause it's two street setbacks?
Yeah, yeah, that you made him go to three.
I don't think you need to list it twice, in the sense that you're, you're varying those sections.
That request.
Yeah, the application, it shows that, and you're gonna be, again, once again, per the plan submitted, so the plan submitted is gonna show where those setbacks are, okay?
Okay, anyone here to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion. We have a second.
That was, uh.
Restaurant.
Okay.
Okay, um, all those in favor of the, um, variances?
Ranging the variables.
Ranging the variances?
Yes.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Abstained? Okay, hearing, no, uh, it seems to have passed unanimously.
We're still gonna do the coastal site plan review as well.
Oh, say it again? Oh, coastal site plan application is approved.
Take a motion whether to approve or not, right?
Oh.
And we can discuss why. And we can discuss why.
Okay.
So that's where the comment that I made about fixing their, thank you.
Okay, coastal site plan observation is approved because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and does not, and does include all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts on coastal resources and future water-dependent uses. That's, you just needed me to read that.
I need you to read that, I need someone to make that motion, but we need Kathleen to discuss why we believe that's the case. We're going to put it in the record, supporting reasons why we think that's the case.
Ah, okay.
Okay?
So a motion for what you just said.
Okay.
And then.
We have, we need a second?
Need a second.
Second, who wants a second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yeah, and so I, I think that they, in favor of that motion, the fact that they're fixing this leakage on their property.
Yep, that's nice.
I mean, I think that, that supports coastal.
Yeah, but the septic system is.
Go ahead, improve, septic engineered septic system.
Drainage system around, they're doing what they can to improve the water quality.
Of the whole area, as well as their own land.
But the fact that they're lifting the house is not part of the CAM?
It's not really part of the CAM because it doesn't really change the water quality. What I would say is the fact that they're making the driveway pervious does matter because that's basically allowing more water to drain. So I mean, you have, you have things that are being done that are consistent with the goals of the coastal area management.
Okay, and the, the motion has been made and seconded for us to approve this, so a vote comes now?
Well, now would be a great time for a vote.
Those voting in favor of approving the coastal site plan review application?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstaining? Unanimous?
Okay.
A motion.
Thank you.
I have a request. I can never see the yellow. If you would consider maybe pink and green or something more visible from a little distance.
I could bring in some of those red 3D glasses.
Yeah, 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 make it 3D.
That would be pretty funny, I might have to see a picture of it.
Okay, let's see, we're still going, so, for old business, I have nothing for a menu for me to read because I don't know what I'm doing. Did anybody have anything else going on here?
Oh, yeah.
For that?
Now, there were four of us voting members here for the minutes. Four is passing, we could vote on minutes, or do we?
Yes, that's part of the old business, yes.
But I'm seated tonight, so there's five of us.
Okay.
Right?
But, but Russ wasn't here, only four of us were here to approve the minutes. We can approve with four.
Yes, you have four of us, at least three, as long as you have.
Just making sure.
You, you can vote with four.
Okay, so I do have a script, so let me start on that and we'll see how to get us back in order. Any new cases submitted by November 9th? I think we received at the November 20th ZBA meeting, guess there are none?
None, but again, as it mentions, if something comes in between now and January, it will deemed automatically received, but we'll have to determine whether or not it's a public hearing, we'll get to that later, but just, we have no new cases as of right now, so we'll have to just go from there, okay?
So as there are no ZBA regular meetings in December, the public hearings for any new applications received by the ZBA on November 20th will be scheduled for the January 15th ZBA meeting, that's within 65 days received. Any applications submitted between November 20th and December 10th will be automatically received 35 days after submission, and those submitted between December 11th and January 14th will be received at the January 15th ZBA meeting. Those applications submitted by December 4th and deemed complete by land use staff, including LLHD Ledzleit, when required, will also have their public hearing scheduled for January 15th, 2026 ZBA meeting. Those applications submitted by December 4th and deemed incomplete by staff, for example, missing Ledzleit Health Department approval when required, will be, will have the scheduling of their public hearings delayed until February 2026 ZBA meeting. Chair update, we welcome the newly elected members and alternates, Michaela, Kathleen, Richard, and Nicholas, whose terms began yesterday, is that true?
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, we were sworn in on the 18th, 19th.
There you go. Also reminded, first-time alternates, that they need, that they are required to complete four hours of affordable housing land use training before their first year on the board is complete. Eric Knapp, the land use coordinator, can answer any questions you may have about the training. And finally, special thanks to those members and alternates leaving the board, Steve Dix and Brian Cole. Brian left a souvenir, so I'm going to read that. And he left his samples there that were beautiful. Pretty good. And if I, Brian asked me to read this into the record, so we're all going to find out what Brian wanted to say in his exit. Dear fellow ZBA members, as I take leave of this position on the ZBA, I wish to express a few thoughts and thanks. To my fellow ZBA members, I wish to offer a heartfelt thank you for your service to our town. In particular, I want to acknowledge the Chair Nancy Hutchinson and Vice Chair Kip Cosson for their exemplary leadership and citizens of the United States, of the United States of the whole line can feel comfortable, no, it's late, knowing that the business of the ZBA is in good hands. To Sylvia, Eric, Amy, and Craig, I thank you for your dedication to the ZBA and for using your experience and wisdom to benefit the citizens of the whole line. And for those newly elected, I ask you to bring the same dedication aboard that those, as those I have mentioned, you will quickly realize that political parties, notwithstanding, this board functions to do the work of the town. I think you will also come to realize that your participation in the governance of the whole line is something which you may be rightfully proud. I wish to, I thank the citizens of the whole line for their trust in electing me ZBA two years ago. I wish you all the very best moving forward. Brian Cole. Very sweet, that's the first exit letter I think I've ever heard of. He's very thoughtful.
Putting a bar up to us.
Okay, so correspondence and announcements, I don't have anything, approval of ZBA minutes from October 16th meeting, someone just make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, so moved.
That was Michaela, okay.
Yeah, Kayla. And seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay, I can second these things, too, right, or not?
Yeah.
I don't know whether I can or I can't. So those who vote to approve of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?